Raise. Still muted. They probably regulate the board of select meeting. Monday, July 7th, 25 to order. First order of business is a public hearing, but we're going to do pledge allegiance before we have.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, first item for the session is a public hearing on the resolution to municipal redevelopment authority as a member of municipality. Unfortunately Sandy's not here, since our representative of the housing committee. But we have the esteemed chair of the affordable housing committee.
That's not her.
Yeah, come on up. Oh, there's Sandy, perfect time.
I hope you're not waiting to maybe do anything.
No.
It's all good.
It's all good.
Well, I'll start before you get settled, and I'll just say that um this group used to be called the municipal redevelopment authority and didn't like that in academics, they changed it to the C and D, but basically the state has some funds that are available and they did a presentation that's broad that probably half of our commission went to. And then last month they came and spoke with our commission for about an hour, David Corrus, about the potential for funding to help with housing and transit oriented development areas, also town centers. And so there, there are some zoning things that they'd like us to do, but we've already done a lot of that with our zoning green right, we have an incentive housing zone down the town center south study. And so I think we're in pretty good shape for this and that will offer us some, you know, financial opportunities and maybe some planning opportunities to develop more dense housing downtown. So just being for myself, I think this is a terrific opportunity and it's a nothing but insured, nothing gains type scenario. There's really nothing to lose here, so. I'm thankful you're considering it this morning.
Great.
Is there anything you want to add, Sam, as a member of the housing commission on the?
I think MJ did a good summary. I think it's, it's, I support us joining because it just opens up an opportunity for opportunities. We may or may not get the funding or we may or may not choose to do it in a way that we might have to do it, but if we're not in the mix, then we won't even know what we are possibly missing or possibly getting. I, this does not, as far as I know, Matt, it, it just allows us to be
Considered.
Considered, right. We're not signing up for anything except signing up to sign up, right?
Will the public have an opportunity to apply for any grants or is strictly?
It's strictly visible, but we can apply on behalf of commercial.
And if somebody had something.
And it's not strictly residential either, just to be clear, that mixed use is part of it. So it is an economic development incentive for housing and business.
It's both, it is for both, that's a good point. And then the process is, this is the first step of the, well, first step of the process was talk to them and understand what the opportunities might, might be there for us. This is a requisite step, perfunctory step in order to be considered. They will work with us, they'll take a look at our zoning code to determine if there are any tweaks needed to be made in order to try to create these incentive districts. And most of those are sort of oriented around downtown areas, but there is some possibility that adjacent to those downtown areas could be included. In fact, the developer of the Hubbard Road Affordable Housing Project met with David Corrus from the authority to see whether or not that parcel would be, would be considered to be within one of those incentive districts. It's a, it's a little too far outside at this point and, and it's not really connectivity to the adjacency through, to the downtown area, so. And again, as we just stated, this doesn't obligate us to any, this gives us the opportunity to explore potential future opportunities. The zoning code will be reviewed, it'll come back to us and say, well, if you want to be able to participate in some of these funding opportunities, you might need to do this, this or that. At that point, we have the opportunity to say, thank you, well, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're not going to do this, or we don't do any of that. If it doesn't fit into.
So there are no requirements, responsibilities, et cetera?
No cost, there's no membership requirement at all. How, what's the mechanism for our joining? Do we sign a document to join and if so, can we see it?
Um, I think it was in the fact that it's a resolution, and I think the resolution is in and of itself what the requirement.
There's also not in the, further, further down in the agenda where we actually vote on this, there's something about a memorandum of, of understanding? What, what is that?
I have, I have not seen that at this point.
I think that is the boilerplate thing. This is open to all 169 towns in Connecticut, and I think there are a handful that have signed up and there's a form up, but I believe Peter Barrett did look at it.
Yes, Peter, Peter, Peter would have looked at it, but quite honestly, our ability, our ability to change anything. But your points, your points were taken.
You should know before we vote on doing this, exactly what we're signing up for. It seems like it's all opportunity and no downside, but we should be good on it to make sure.
Just one thing, it's ironic, this morning, earlier this morning, I signed a bid document that's going out for an affordable housing parcel analysis. This is a grant we received from the state of Connecticut to try to identify parcels of land in town that would be suitable for, for affordable housing. One thing I need to be clear on, this is not just affordable housing development, this is throughout the entire stack, the housing stacks, so it's not just affordable housing.
It's a housing that is affordable, which is, I mean, it's a capital A affordable is a big word, but really in Guilford, we struggle with the whole missing middle concept, so.
But you said this is not strictly housing.
No, it's not strictly housing, but it's, at its core, it is to drive housing and they want, and they want to try to encourage mixed use development as well.
In the downtowns.
Walkability, that kind of thing, so.
I read that old Sabre just signed up. That's very interesting.
All right, are there? You don't have to leave.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments from the public in the room?
Hi, Janice Blazek, you're town engineer and also resident. I'd just like to remind everyone that having worked on like the Woodruff property decision and all that is that we consider flood zones and environmental kind of restrictions or, you know, things that have to be considered when we're also considering incentives for development. In some of these areas, our town center is very close to a lot of flood prone areas and, you know, access, things like that. And state funding, if it is to be received, doesn't just require the 100 year flood zone compliance, it requires a 500 year flood zone compliance, which makes it that much more difficult to achieve compliance. And I believe federal funding may have that requirement. So I just want to, you know, remind everyone that when we do these incentives for development, that we are mindful of kind of all the restrictions and regulations that apply to them.
Janice, thanks for that point. The other, the other point, I think somewhat obvious, we forget about it, is that we are constrained relative to SEPTIC.
Yeah, your SEPTIC.
So our, our codes regarding SEPTIC cannot be changed, those will not be changed.
But you said that this was not going to put any additional burden on the town. What you're saying applies to things that we apply for within this program, not overall necessarily.
Well, no, we have a regulations in place that are.
We have a regular regulation.
Yeah, right.
I, I just, my understanding, what you said earlier is that us signing up for this, joining this is not going to add any burden to the town.
Not unless we opt in, opt to make changes in our zoning code.
We make changes, that, that's one thing, but just want to what, what, what you're saying is that if we do something within this grant or get something for some project, then potentially additional restrictions might apply. They won't necessarily apply wasn't within that grant.
Right.
Unless we made some changes on our.
Right, right, right.
This underscores a really important point. Everyone's so sensitive right now to loss of local control and this is really nothing to do with that. We have all of our same, our same rules will continue to exist, the same review processes, all the same requirements.
Thank you for that point. And a quick note to say something about it, HB 5002 was vetoed by the governor. I had supported the veto based on some flaws in the, in the methodologies that were arrived at. The number of housing units, affordable housing units that we would have needed to achieve that bill was, was, I would consider outrageous. Even though it was only 25% of the study that had been conducted to, that drove 5002, we would have had to have developed 475 affordable housing units over a period of time, which quite honestly is un, completely unrealistic. There was also in 5002, there were some, there were some changes, over road parking requirements, onsite parking. So I'll take for instance, the greater downtown area. There are a couple of parcels around the green that could yield half a dozen to maybe a dozen housing units that are of good size of parcels of property. If there was no requirement for them to have onsite parking, that could have been 20 some odd cars or more cars looking for parking spaces on a regular basis downtown, which is already at a choke point relative to, to parking, so. Again, this was also ironically, this was an initiative that came out of the governor's office to do exactly what you just said is to allow municipalities to determine their own fate relative to zoning and, and developing housing. Not a must, but an option, an opt in kind of arrangement, so. This is, this, this is what, I think two and a half years hold now. The original authority was created, I think in 2023, so it's a little over two years. Come in.
It's my understanding that this 5002 was tabled and he plans to have a meeting after the election.
No, it was vetoed, it was vetoed and the legislature.
That's what it said, so it's actually been vetoed.
It's been vetoed, but with the anticipation that they go back into session and rework the bill. And, and the governor's pretty, been sticking to his guns on this.
I hope so. And then I have one other quick question. My understanding of, I don't know the order of the words, work, ride.
Yes, the, that, that was the bill that was put on.
My understanding is if that could be near a train station or a bus stop or something, but that you did not have to follow inland wetland rules for those pieces of property. That's always been my understanding.
Janice just talked about the flood plain requirements that are still going to be required. That is, that's quite honestly, that's one of the reasons why the Woodruff housing, the affordable housing development has stalled or was stalled over a period of time because, as Janice mentioned, they didn't, they didn't design to the 500 years level, they had only done at 100 year level, so. And then there are some other, the only other, there are some other considerations for transit oriented development, but there aren't significant number of parcels that fall. Despite the couple that I mentioned earlier downtown, there aren't a significant number of parcels where affordable, where large scale development can take place. Now, that being said, we Public Works Facility could eventually be a target for this kind of redevelopment activity, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and move on to item three, public forum. Anyone wishing to address the board in public forum and any to attend to items? All right, hearing done. Move on to item four, approval of minutes. Four dot one would be the June 16th, 2025 regular meeting.
Move to approve.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Number four. Consider and take possible action to extend the firefighters agreement.
Yep.
We didn't. I, what number four, I think number four might be active. There's no action on or associated with that. So maybe that needs another look. I think that we added it to the agenda.
We did, we attended and moved.
And then later on we moved it, and that, and that might be in here, I might have missed that, but number four is just kind of sticking out there.
It should, it should, what are you suggesting? It should say we, we approved that? Because that's my recollection too.
We did approve it, yeah, I, I think.
Unless it's somewhere else, we just want to, just say we added it and approved that?
I, I, I don't, I don't remember, it's like three whole weeks ago, I can't remember. Maybe, maybe during the meeting Tracy could check back and see. That would be great. I think we approved it too. We, we definitely approved it, yeah, yeah, but did we, yeah.
Okay.
I believe, I believe you approved that after executive session, did you not?
Hold on.
We discussed it in executive session. Number four must be adding it to the agenda.
I think it was adding it to.
So we could clarify that and then add after executive session that we approved it.
All right. Well, let's get Tracy up there to take a look and then, so the motion to table it, temporary, in a second.
Second.
Let me try your mind, it's all in favor. Aye, aye, that motion carries. Item five, Board of Ed, business manager, Linda Trudeau, good morning, Linda.
Good morning, everybody. Um, so, excuse me. I'm here again to ask for authorization to enter into a capital lease. As you all remember, Board of Ed cannot enter into any debt on their own. You have the resolution, that resolution was prepared by Matt Ritter for us. This year's lease will be $500,000 to purchase Chromebooks for grades five and nine. Interactive boards for high school Adams and Baldwin. Desktop computers for central office and main offices of the schools. And then a facilities vehicle, which will be a pickup truck. The list that you may have received says van, but it's going to be a pickup truck with a cab over the back of the truck for one of the maintenance men. I don't have proposals yet for rates. I'm gonna, I expect those on Friday. I was a little late getting started on this this year, so the rates won't be in until Friday, but we do have $113,895 budgeted for the lease payment for this for the first year. And I'll answer any questions you have.
We had discussions about leasing trucks.
We're not actually leasing, this is a lease purchase arrangement, so it's just, it's financing, basically. And because it, because it adds to our indebtedness, we have to do this resolution.
Yeah, just not leasing is probably the worst way to.
Yeah.
Wire a vehicle.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I have a question. I've asked this back when you were in Board of Finance days, but the whiteboards, that's what you mean by those interactive boards, right? We.
Yes.
Are they operating exactly the same as the existing equipment? I mean, is there any change? Does it come with training, I guess is my point.
Yeah, there, there are, they are different than the boards that we have now. They have new features. And like a computer, the boards have a lifespan. So these are some new location ones and some replacement of ones that have been used a lot.
Yeah. But my question is, are people using them and is there training available if people need training?
Yes, there is training available. We have a staff person who goes through the schools and, and helps with all this kind of technology training, plus there is a tech in each school that is available when teachers and staff needs it during the day.
On the same lines, is there a fee for the programs or the software, or is it the same as the existing software, or has that a new cost too?
There's no software fee to it and it's programs that we're already using, so there's no added cost for anything to operate these.
This is good information for us to have, but this has all been gone over during the budget process, such as the point where we're just deciding. Yeah, we're, right. Financing of it.
Anything further? All right, is there a motion to approve entering into the, entering into the lease purchase agreement for the materials as outlined in our documentation? Any other motion? Second. I'll second. Any further comments or questions?
Yeah, I'll say, normally I think we have rates. I feel better about it if we have, if we did have rates, we're authorizing something, we don't know the details of it, but I'm just comfortable with Mrs. Trudeau, happy with whatever she comes up with, so I'm good with it.
Thank you.
All right, let me try your minds all in favor. Aye, that motion carries. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
Item number six, town engineer, Janice Blazek, who's here to discuss and, and our possible actions to contract with Silver Petricelli for architectural design and consultation services for 52 Church.
One of my favorite projects.
May I just say one thing before you start? This is, you probably haven't been to say this, but I just wanted to acknowledge that three of the four committee members are in the room, myself, Janice and Teresa Cannon Todd and Anchula was the other subset for the historic district committee commission involvement with 52 Church Street. So, so, thank you, Janice.
Yeah, no problem. So as you know, we've been working on this project for a long time.
It was being made.
I think, yes, there's, there's progress. I think some of the things came to light with regard to the building itself. It was further documented that it's a contributing building to the district. The documentation of when the district was created and the town center district particularly, I believe. So that adds to kind of the need to retain the building as opposed to our first approach with trying to demolish the building and replace it. So working with the representatives that Sandy pointed out, Teresa who's in the room and Todd. We've been working towards the effort to establish a project that can be approved by the historic district commission given the, their charge and meet the needs of the town for extension of parking as well as storage facilities for the parking wreck department. So the way I went about this was I looked first, I reached out to Shippo to find out if there were a list of architects. We've had some challenges with getting architects on board for the project in the past, so reached out to Shippo to find out if they had a list of, you know, architects who are historic architects, and so they sent me the list and looking on it, lo and behold, one of our on call architects was on the list, which is Silver Petricelli. So that was a great opportunity for us to kind of fast track the process. And I have worked with Silver Petricelli in the past at Bramford. They did an excellent job with an extension on the Blackstone Library in Bramford, which came out fabulous. So they, you know, they're, I worked with them with the Firehouse, a few other projects in Bramford, so they have, you know, some great experience particularly with regard to historic structures. So we reached, we met with Dave Stein, he came to one of our little committee meetings and talked with him about the project. He talked, walked him through the building and he developed this proposal for us, which meets the needs of the project from start to finish in terms of architectural services and is a total of $48,500, which is below the $50,000 threshold that we have for on call architectural services, so I think it's a win-win to move forward with them as our architect on this project. The town engineering department will be doing the site civil work for the layout of the property and, and that, and we're still entertaining proposals on the landscape architecture aspect, so there'll, there'll be some additional professional services needed for the project.
Is there a motion?
I'll second it. I just would like to comment that parking wreck director Pam Eary is on for this and she was not part of the poor person study, but you and your, you and your people are aware of what's going on, right Pam? And will have input into particularly the storage needs and parking, et cetera.
Very excited. I do know I owe Janice a few more lists from maintenance. Yep.
So is the idea essentially that the existing, entire existing structure is going to be preserved and then the interior is going to be adopted for parking wreck use?
To be determined. So we're trying to first establish the needs for space needs. There's some challenges with the existing building in terms of the back part of the building was an addition of which there's an oil tank that was removed and some contamination there. There's a couple additions to the south as well. So depending on the space needs, those, those options are in play as to whether or not we need those areas and whether they can be removed or need to be renovated for purposes of the space needs. There's also the potential, since the maintenance department for park and wreck has the needs for storage of, you know, gas powered equipment and such, it might make sense to do a separate out, outbuilding like a shed or small garage, you know, or barn type structure, something that kind of works with the the site to house those separate from the other needs for storage, so those are all things we're gonna, the first step is to meet with park and wreck with the architect and the list they've provided onsite with the facilities department, so we can all look at all the things in play regarding the building and what we may need to save or what maybe should go. And then the renovation plans will be developed and then.
I think with some of the discussions that I was not present at, that Teresa shared with us, there, there is, when you face the building, the right hand side is more the design elements that the HTC is concerned about and the additions. It makes more sense to remove some of those to do what Janice just described. That's not going to be a problem with the HTC, as far as I could tell.
Right, right, right. The original part is of interest to us. If you're looking at the building from the street, it's really in four sections. The right hand three are original, the left hand one was added on, and then everything in the back that Janice referenced was also added on and is not part of the original.
When you talk about equipment, you're not talking about the trucks in there, you're just.
No.
Every day.
Yeah, the stuff they need for center of town maintenance, like snow blowers.
We're not talking the trucks.
No, nothing that normally gets trailered or the trucks would be included in that storage because you know, that's, that's either at their place now or at the future public works. It's just really stuff that's.
When you started saying public works and equipment, I.
No, 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 very limited. Yeah, no, no, no.
And part of that is, I think, another initiative, not part of our little group, but to gradually empty the old public works building.
At some point, yes.
In case you want to use it for something else or sell it or whatever.
Yeah.
All those things that are there have to be some.
You're talking about Wilson Street?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, the old old public.
The old old.
Not assuming the old public.
But we're not going, we're not going through all this to produce storage. That was not the original intention.
It's a byproduct.
Right, exactly. So I don't want anyone to be listening to this and think that we've done all this to create.
Right, right. Original, the original goal was the parking.
The parking.
And then when the, you know, HTC denied our application for demolition of the existing structure, it was, you know, quite apparent that we needed to retain the building.
Yeah.
And working with them and meeting with them late last year was, you know, and it, it shed light on what their real interest is, and so, you know, trying to accommodate that as well as the needs of the parking and the adjacent use for the park and wreck, you know, makes sense, so. Yeah, so the.
And I think in the original, original thought that we had, I think Rick, Director Rick Maynard at the time had spoken up or asked for some form of storage that we thought was going to be towards the back of the site. So storage was always mentioned, right?
I wasn't here when we first purchased the property, so I don't want to. You can say something I'm not sure about.
Parking was paramount in our brain, for sure, but storage has sort of evolved.
Byproduct, yeah, yeah.
There would eventually be parking access between the existing parking lot and that back area?
Yeah, so when we were first denied by HTC for our proposal at the time, the first thing we did in the engineering department was come out a layout of parking that we could still achieve with the building in place. And so I can't remember the exact numbers, but we still get a good number of parking spaces. I think it's just below 40, maybe like 35 to 40 parking spaces, and that would just mean that we would have a connection to the existing parking lot. You know, in the back. Likely it's still to be determined whether or not there would be the, a connection from there to the rear parking lot to the street, because even if we had the room, it's so adjacent to the other driveway, I'm not sure, we might still retain some parking in. driveway, I'm not sure. We might still retain some parking in the front, because there's always historically been some parking in the front. So, you know, anything we could do to add spaces, even if it's just a small, you know, few spaces in the front, like has been historically there. And then the separate larger lot in the back connected to the existing park and rec parking lot, so.
And so, the current momentum sounds like buildings preserved, at least some sections of it.
Right.
Parking rec use, maybe some public works use somewhere on the property, but not.
No public works.
So, parking rec.
Just park and rec, yeah.
But no public access to the building necessarily? It's not going to be.
Not anticipated.
We're not anticipating it to be anything more than storage. Some of the challenges are, it's just septic capacity.
Right.
As well as just the grading that needs to be done for the site to make it a parking lot would probably impact the septic. And we also have to do stormwater management onsite, so that would conflict with the septic. But it hasn't been, yeah, it hasn't been identified as an occupied building, you know, and I don't see it going that direction. We're trying to keep it kind of a passive storage building that meets, still meets with the design requirements for HTC.
And that's a useful feature for park and rec?
It is, yes.
And, and, and I, I, I think I said this back in the winter of 18, when we contemplated purchasing it. It, oh, it, it creates more downtown municipal parking. I mean, park and rec is very busy and open a lot of hours, but there's still evenings and weekends that has other activities, so that's more downtown parking space.
Can we ask about the certificate of appropriateness? So, we go through this process and at the end of it, we're applying for the certificate. Is there, is that guaranteed? Is there any reason to think that we'll go through this, spend these funds and still not get it?
Well, that's the purpose why we have this little committee that is including two members of the HTC to have input. Plus, we had that, you know, meeting with them like last year to really hear what their concerns were. There's no guarantees, but I would think that we're doing all we can to incorporate their concerns and ideas in, in the process.
Right.
Yeah, and there's still planning and zoning approvals that need to be taken as well, so it's not just HTC.
I'm, I'm very comfortable based on the input I've received from those who are participating in this task force that this is, this is a genuine, good-faith exercise. We've kept this can around for a long time. And there were some nuclear options that we didn't take. So, it is my understanding that this committee's recommendations will most likely, if not definitely, meet the expectations of the board, because the board will have had representation. And I want to thank the four of you for working to this end to get this done. And then ironically, there's a, there's a connection to item seven on the agenda with the later house, because one of the, one of the storage needs, well, currently over at that, on that property, are freezers and refrigerators for some of the materials for the food bank and then for the holiday food drives. They store frozen turkeys and stuff. So, there's a, there's a tie-in to the later house, which we'll get to in a couple of minutes.
Matt, I have a question.
Yeah, Pam.
So, is the thought process, when we're talking about space and storage needs, twofold with old public works possibly going away, so we have to think about whatever's in there would come over to 52 Church as well as the possibility of DPW and park maintenance going up north?
Yeah, all those are in play. You guys, we also have one of the tents that was erected at the school during COVID, which is currently at the public works facility. So, there are, there are other opportunities for us to, to create some storage, particularly up at the current public works facility. But the longer-term plan, yeah, you're right, Pam. There's a lot of moving parts here that could fall into place nicely.
Thank you.
I have just one more comment. And this layer may not be applicable, but two years ago, we worked with Shippo to give the town a grant to look at a master feasibility plan for all the storage needs and highest and best use of every town building in town. And they awarded us a grant of up to $30,000 to have somebody do that study. So, I don't know whether anybody wants to use that money, but it would be. It's always good to kind of do a bigger look at all the square footage that's available and what the highest and best use of this building would be. And there.
Thank you for the reminder on that. I do know we had a conversation recently with Ian Harchen, our town planner, who is aware that that funding opportunity is there. Now, it's a question of putting together an RFP and getting it off the streets. Thank you for that reminder. Anything for? All right, so is there a motion to approve an agreement with Silver Petricelli for $8,500?
I think you made it.
Did we make it already?
I seconded it.
Good conversation, very helpful. Positive, thank you. All right, any further? Here, you're not going to try your minds, fall on the paper. That motion carries, thank you. Item seven, facility supervisor Todd. Congratulations. This is your first appearance on this.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm excited about this. So, I just want to pass, pass on an executive summary.
We don't have a crossbow with you, but. All right, let me just tee this up. So, as everyone's aware, Board of Education has finally moved their office to Lake House. And the board now falls back to town, town use. And we have need for additional space. And the current plan incorporates a couple of pieces. There's, there's some more working pieces to it over time. But we are intending to move the engineering department, Janice and her team, which would be three, Michael and Al, as well as John Trudis, our economic development director, who is currently still sitting at one of the administrative desks in our office. And when he has to make confidential phone calls, he's in the other conference room usually, so. And then, so that, so those, those four will be moving into that facility. The link to the, to the turkeys is that those freezers are currently in that structure. And that structure is really probably not the most appropriate place to be storing food and so forth. So, one portion of the later house, as you look at the building on the right-hand side, there's a small door there. And there's a, there's a room large enough to accommodate the refrigerators and freezers that have currently been used for, or are currently still being used for some of these, some of these needs. So, to that end, Todd has, with some help from Tony, in terms of the technology stuff, done a good job of trying to pull together some, some actions and the related costs related to inhabiting that space. So, Todd, floor is yours.
Okay. So, I apologize for not getting this to you sooner, but this project's sort of taken a pretty fast pace. So, we, we did go out for some requested quotes for electrical, painting, and carpet cleaning. So, as in the summary I put together, it's basically two phases. So, phase one is summer of 2025, preparation and upgrades, just getting ready for the departments to move in there. Really just necessary upgrades and preparations. So, one of the big pieces is the electrical. There's a lot of unknowns with the electrical just because of the age of the building. But our plan is to get some more information from the electrical contractors as far as a 400-amp service, three-phase.
Why three-phase? Usually, that's reserved for heavy equipment.
Correct. So, what we're, with going with a 400-amp, three-phase service, what we're doing is we're planning for the future. So, depending on what happens in five years, 10 years down the road, we've already upgraded the service to three-phase. The other thing too is, I did discuss this with the standing building committee and reviewed that with them. I had a conversation with Silver Petricelli just to talk about the, the building and reviewed it, you know, if we do upgrade service, do we do a 400-amp, one-phase? Or do we do 400-amp, three-phase? And their recommendation was to go 400-amp, three-phase. Because down the road, if we ever wanted to put, you know, more of a major elevator in there, because right now, we just have a, an elevator that's not working. So, if we wanted to.
Think of what kind of equipment you would ever put in a building like that, but an elevator makes sense, sure.
Right. And so, basically, the, the fourth, the, the single, 400-amp, single-phase is basically four wires. If you do the three-phase, you have five wires going into the building. And what it does is just allows us to be prepared. And, and so, that's where that came from, yeah.
My only other, you know, I could see the logic about the elevator, just that when you do three-phase, all of your cost of having the service and that type of thing, more than quadrupled.
Correct. That's, that's why we need a little bit more time to gather the information from these electrical contractors. You know, and that even, you know, the circuit panels. You know, we've reviewed. So, the phase one does not include a complete renovation of rewiring the whole building. It's basically to get engineering and economic development in the space and then plan the future. Any other questions on the electrical? I, I, you know, we plan on being back here in a couple of weeks, just with more of a, a fine tune in this information and prices, so. Second was information technology. Tony, I don't know, do you want to speak now on that or you want to wait?
You could do it.
Yeah.
Mine's just informational stuff.
So, so IT is another portion of the renovation. Number three is painting. So, we did go out to multiple contractors in the area. And the thought was, the, the whole building needs to be just cleaned up, spruced up. So, what we're going to do is paint the ceilings, the walls, the trim. We have a nice neutral color that's picked out, the Guilford green for the trim. We did receive quotes. So, my recommendation would be to work with M&amp;R Painting. Their price was $24,280. Unfortunately, it doesn't include the paint, but we anticipate with our contacts with Rings End and Page Hardware, Joe's Flooring, roughly $3,000 for paint, so. And then, again, once again, include two coats, you know, Benjamin Moore painted.
So, you said you got quotes from local contractors. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with M&amp;R. Are, are they local?
M&amp;R is out of New Haven, but we've had some really good success with them. They actually painted the Lake Quanipog bathhouse. And when we did go out to bid for that, they came back with a really nice proposal. So, if anyone's seen the Lake Quanipog bathhouse, it looks fantastic. I, I've known the owner of M&amp;R Painting for about 10 years. He did work with another company, a local company here, so. So, I'm very, very comfortable with, with that.
Is this the whole, is this quote to paint upstairs and downstairs?
Right, yep.
Interior.
The whole interior, yep. From ceilings down all the way down to the, yeah, everything.
Were they the lowest bidder?
They were the lowest bidder, yep. And with our due diligence, some of the local contractors that we did talk to, the good thing is that they're busy. So, a couple of them did decline to quote. They apologized, but they just had too much work, work to do. We did get a quote from another individual, another company, and the price was considerably higher than this. So. But M&amp;R is, is flexible as far as timeframe. More than likely, it's going to be two to three weeks of work, get in there and clean the whole thing up, you know, and they're not going to be doing any, you know, major scraping of the windows or glazing and things like that. But just clean it all up, so we're, we're ready for the, the different departments to come in, so.
How is that building set for lead? I mean, it's been pretty much maintained and painted a number of times in recent years. Are we okay with lead in this inside now?
Well, that's a, a good question. So, the phase one does not include a, a full-blown assessment on the materials. That would be phase two.
I'm pretty sure the outside has been taken care of.
Yeah.
But any of the, you know, in our request for quote, we did ask, you know, for lead certification. So, all these companies are familiar with working in, with historical buildings.
It's not in the capital plan at this point, but it is. We have a reserve account of building fund, which this was anticipated to use. Eventually, this was one of the uses that was anticipated to use for, in addition to some of the work that we're talking about over at Park and Rec. We have, we have a reserve account.
Because we're talking.
They actually have two accounts, don't we?
Facility projects and building maintenance.
And there's hundreds of thousands of dollars in total. So, I, I apologize. I'm still stuck on the idea of the original plan, which was that we were going to be able to privatize this house. Same thing with the Board of Ed Administration building, which now I understand they need for storage. I'm kind, I'm still kind of stuck on that, that we're, that we've decided to, to go in this direction with a huge price tag. I understand we have office needs, but we looked at, have we looked at that, other ways, other ways of solving those needs?
Actually, this, the use of this building by the time was contemplated in the facility study that we did back in 2018, 2019. That was chaired by Eric McKelley. This was, one of the recommendations was to utilize this for the eventual needs of. We're already talking, if anybody's been over to Town Hall South lately, which is that there was no room.
Oh, sure, except that, yeah, yeah.
So, and, and privatization of this is, is a significant challenge, because A, there's no parking, no onsite parking. B, it shares a septic system with the library. And there's some other considerations. Janice?
It's, it, there's, you know, the physical setbacks from the library building are very limited. So, creation of a separate lot to, you know, sell this off, I think, is going to be a, a challenge. And then just remember back that, you know, originally, it was going to be part of the expansion of the library. I think it's, I don't know, personally, I would think that it's a better building for the town to retain and develop a future for because of its adjacencies to the library itself as well as the town hall. And it's, you know, physical challenges as a separate entity, you know, structure that someone would have to live in and find, there's no physical room for a septic system on the site. There would have to be easements and finding areas to create a septic system for that building.
What was the other structure imagined, excuse me?
Where the Board of Ed Administrative Office is up.
Behind the tenants' courts?
Yeah.
Yeah, the corner house.
Yeah.
On New England Road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the little ranch.
And I think these improvements do not preclude us from at some point in the future, if we want to consider privatizing it, it still is there. We're not changing the structure of it. We're not moving walls, we're just making it useful, inhabitable. Not that it was uninhabitable, but I'm not sure. Did much maintenance on the inside of that building?
I knew they were leaving, so sure, yeah.
But it's a good point, as usual.
So, you may be getting to this, but if I, if you are, I could say leave, but this is all interior, because this is in the town center HTC district as well, so time to ask this first rather than later, as we did. Yep, so the ramp, the ramp is an outside deal, so would that have to be, would HTC be involved with that?
That's something I've been working with engineering on, so more than likely, we, we'd have to have a, we'd have to have a discussion for the ramp in the back.
Right, yeah, that would be something. That would be the only, right now, that's the only exterior improvement that's being contemplated and it's in the rear of the building, but it would have to go through the local approvals.
Yeah, and then the, the electrical to, the new service, you know.
If there's anything on the exterior, there would, it would have to get a COA.
So, that would be a difference. So, those are the two pieces with the exterior, but nothing else. Along your question too about usability.
Let me go, let me go back to the ramp.
Yeah.
How do you guys play with the ADA requirements? Is that just a design element, what it looks like? Because if that is a public building, and I'm surprised the Board of Education's gotten away with that for years, that there is no ADA access to that building.
Right, that, yes, we, yeah, we can't say no to, and we can't access, but what we can say is.
Right, that, yes, we, yeah, you can't say no to, and you can't access, but what we can say is, you know, what it should be built out of and where it's located and that kind of thing, but yeah, but not that you can have A D A.
Good question. And and what, what is gonna be changed to the exterior?
So the currently, there's a, the existing electrical service is underneath the window.
Okay.
The the electrical service right now is about three feet high. Per code, it needs to be higher and moved over a little bit, so, and it's gonna be a bigger panel.
For building code or electric?
For the electric, correct, per per the code, yeah. And so we may have to move the exterior oil tank, I think that needs to be moved over a couple of feet, just to, for code purposes.
It's still oil in that building?
It's still oil, correct. So there's two.
This building was burned as gas, right?
So there's-
And the library was burned to gas, so when it went-
I mean, that might, might be a consideration to look at.
So we could talk about that phase two if you- So-
Well, if you start moving oil tanks, that's the time to look at.
Yeah, I think this one could be moved fairly easily, because it's above ground, above ground. The other thing too is, um, I mean, this has all happened pretty quick. So I did rob McCool from the library, he had to take a look at the facility, and we showed him the um, you know, the large conference room area. And he's like, this would be great if we could use this room for some of his big staff meetings. Um, because currently, he has, he was telling me that he has to have meetings like, you know, around the circulation, circulation desk and you know, there's no big space for the, to have a full-blown staff meeting, so he's, so I think there's a lot of opportunity.
So phase one will be this summer, and then move everybody in in the fall, saying, and then-
The goal would be September first, yeah. The goal, that's the goal.
I mean, kind of micromanaging, but since phase two involves a lot of renovations, wouldn't it make sense to not spend thirty thousand on painting before, before we do that?
So-
Sure, it's ugly, but, but-
It does.
But it's gonna be redone.
Yeah, it does need it, so either, I don't know, do you want me to jump to phase two?
Yeah, go ahead.
Why not jump? So then, just the other thing too with, you know, just phase one is the carpet cleaning, again, same thing. H V A C, like we talked about, existing oil burners, water heaters, A C units, accessibility. So on the back, um, the back shows phase two. So phase two is a full renovation and modernization. And this would be a large-scale project for the town, and it would include a um engineering needs assessment. So what that would, you know, the, and then with that needs assessment, you would have to prepare a specs to go to Standing Building Committee and then have quotes. Then you need engineering design. So if we did, if we wanted to go with phase two, realistic, um, several months to years before anyone's moved in.
Janice. Can I just make a point too, that the engineering department is planning to be here temporarily. The plan is to move us into the new public works facility, which obviously has yet to be approved or built or, you know, anything, so. I don't know how quickly this phase two is being contemplated for, but it may be more like years, I have to think, if it's not gonna improve us staying there, so I I I think that's down the road in terms of.
So I would agree with you, we have the project over at Public, uh, Park and Rec. Uh, the police department is potentially looking at uh some, some work being done. And the public works facility, I think, would all take precedent over renovating this facility.
Because if-
Particularly if if it is serving a purpose for us today.
Because if they move in, and then somehow phase two starts, they have to move out. They'd have to, I mean, they, when you read what would go on, you couldn't possibly-
Right, that's what I'm saying, I think that would be a, a few years out after we were to relocate to permanent.
So, yeah, so-
Sure. I guess it might be retired.
So phase, phase two would be a complete renovation, removing all, removing the walls and sheet rock or the-
Right.
Redesign.
Rewiring.
Yes.
Just, just a nobody's concern when they get over to see the building. Janice and her team are gonna have some pretty good-sized offices. Because of the way it's laid out today.
Yeah, it's a house.
It would not be a final design that you would sell on. We could probably take a couple of those offices and turn them into two or three.
Right.
Um, so that that would be phase two considerations.
Like I T.
And I'm taking the smallest of the three, so.
That's what you can give all the work to the other two.
I mean, it's, you know, some of this space will be used for storage.
Uh, yes, I I I know you've already said you're gonna be back to us shortly with some of the other prices and some of the other projects. What do you see as the schedule, what gets done first? I don't think we clean the carpets until we've done most of the other work, right?
The plan would be, so Steve and I, we went back to the um, the house last week, we looked at it again. So the electrical piece would not be a full-blown ripping wall, you know, opening walls up. It would be um, not as serious as we thought from an electrical standpoint. So first, first thing would be to paint, plus move some of the furniture that's in there, get that out of there that's not gonna be utilized. So we'd paint two to three weeks to paint, paint the facility, and then carpet cleaning is a couple, a day, nice, easy job. And then concurrently with that, then we would do the electrical piece. So the painting and carpet cleaning, you know, so maybe we wait to do the carpet cleaning mid-August. But the electrical piece, we we'd really like to have that done by, before anyone moves in. And then, um, and so back to your question about, you know, the, the four hundred amp, or, you know, originally we were thinking maybe two hundred amp. But then I talked to these electrical contractors, and like, you're gonna do it, go four hundred amp, three phase, and what you're doing is you're preparing for the future.
Future-proofing it, yeah.
Future-proofing it. And then we do the, you know, new electrical panels. So you put a main panel in the basement with a couple of subpanels, put a subpanel in the attic. And then we would, you know, phase two would also include the H V A C, which would be sizable. You know, but you have to look at central air conditioning with the heating.
I recall seeing some window units and air conditioning units taken out of that building.
Window units, there's eight or nine window units. So.
All right, so you're asking us to approve the painting at this point, uh, and maybe the carpet cleaning?
Just had one other comment, if you have anything that needs to be approved by the H D C before you do the work, the application deadline is August first for our August fifteenth or sixteenth meeting. So that's where you would get the approval, so you'd need to get the application in by August first.
We'll get that ready now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, that's good information, yeah.
Deadlines are deadlines for a reason.
Yep.
All right.
So, so I'm here today to, um, you know, we're gonna, right now, we're gonna table the electrical. We need to do some more diligence, get some more pricing back on the electrical piece. But painting, like to get that moving with M and R Painting, and then the carpet cleaning with Miracle Mist. And that, um, didn't really talk about the carpet cleaning too much, but that would include all the floor surfaces.
Including some of that linoleum.
Linoleum.
The wood floors in the back.
The bathrooms, the wood floors in the back, where they clean that up. So that total price is three thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. And here again, we did get proposals from other companies.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be done before the town.
We'll have to talk to our A D A coordinator, uh, because it's, it's a town facility today, there's no way to acquire it.
They, you know, the school was there for twenty-five years and there was no-
Well, we're, yeah, so we're, we're not-
We're not-
The work we're doing, other than the electrical, wouldn't need any building permits. Um, and the way we're gonna approach it, uh, if the ramp isn't in place yet, is we would have any meetings that would require accommodations over either at Town Hall or Town Hall South. Um, and then workhorse getting that ramp. And the ramp, you know, brings you into the back door, gives you good access uh to the, the conference room, although the doorway, I think, is a little narrow. You know, with the rest of the off, lower offices, there's still not gonna be access to the sort of upper floors. So like John's office being on the second floor, he'd come down.
Well, you've got to play it a place.
Yeah.
I think that's-
Yeah.
Maybe a situation would be more.
Todd, we were there looking at the building, we talked about that, that room, the back right, uh, room, uh, which has its own entrance for the food storage. Are you gonna demo that room prior to the-
So the thought is, so this, this particular room that we're talking about has some really old cabinets along the walls, and so so the thought is to demo that, clean it up, so then we'd have more space for the the freezers. So.
The freezers were for what?
The freezers are used for social services for um, for Thanksgiving and Christmas. So they-
They are.
It's at fifty-two church, yeah.
They wanted to take them from fifty-two church.
There's a relationship.
So we, yeah.
So be a renovated space directly from present.
It's just gonna be a storage, just a real open road.
It actually helps Park and Rec, because it gives them more space in fifty-two.
It, absolutely.
Correct, it does, yeah. And there's enough room in there to to put these freezers.
There.
Devoting a room, we have this major, we're renovating this gorgeous building, spending a fortune on it for town offices, but we're gonna dedicate a room for freezers for attorneys for a couple of weeks, a couple times, it doesn't make any sense.
Just the access to the public. Yeah, we get my head wrapped around that.
I know.
No, they said-
I just invest.
The people, the people never came into those rooms to get their food, that it's not public and accessible.
Right.
By the way, we've already purchased all of these freezers.
All the freezers, yeah.
We own them already, so just some time.
And where are they now?
They're in the fifty-two Church Street building.
They're in the back, in the back porch.
They're not connected.
Other?
That's connected, oh, the porch is connected to the house, yeah.
Take them over to the later, right?
And so the thing, so-
Facility, the facility storage on the Park and Rec needs, uh, in the fifty-two Church Street building. And given that there is, we had, we, we had, we had a phase one that suggested portions of that building had contamination in it. So they should not be there to start with.
I appreciate all those, I don't wanna spend this being micromanaging. I'd have to think that would, that seems strange.
There's also possibly they use those for additional capacity for the food bank, if I'm not mistaken.
Every, every once in a while, I've said, and so what's interesting too, I understand, like, you know, we're thinking about two days, it's like Thanksgiving and Christmas for, but what happens is, social services, the, like, the two months running up to the holidays.
Material, yeah.
What they do is they, they, you know, buy stuff in bulk, and if stuff's on sale, then they put it in there.
Building in locations doesn't make sense.
Well, it's, yeah, it was, the, the freezers have been, I was, been involved with the freezers for social services for, for many years. At one point, they were storing it at a, a different location, and then before we hit fifty-two church, we used to use one of the rooms at the community center. And so that was sort of a challenge in itself. But so from a big picture, this, this space for, in the Lathir House is actually, could really work out good. I mean, it could really, it's an efficiency factor.
Good. How many freezers, Todd?
There's four.
There's four, large?
Four large chest freezers, yeah.
Chest freezers, okay.
Chest freezers.
I might be able to work out an alternative space for that, so, but uh-
Yeah, and it's, you know, there's logistics involved too, you know, you want something close to town.
The savings achieved by buying all leading up to the holidays is far outweighed by this whole plan that we're talking about. The fact that we already own freezers doesn't make any difference, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. It'd be great to find an alternative.
Yeah. We're spending too much time micromanaging, but that one there, you know, I don't know enough, or it just doesn't make any sense.
Well, happy to put together a task force.
Except for the turn of members and the task force to figure it out.
As I would say that, I don't-
I'll be happy to serve with you. I'll chime in on a, on a, a, the tiny negatives to having, for instance, like a freezer truck. I understand the concept, this does seem like a lot, but I kind of get the idea of ramping up for the holidays, and it's a little, the idea of a truck with a, a generator.
No, you don't, no.
No, I'm not being critical at all, it's just like super loud, is the point. You know, it's gonna be sitting in the parking lot of the community center or behind fifty-two church, there's some issues associated with that.
Think about the highest and best use of the real estate.
I know, and 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 maybe we should just get a-
And why you have a bunch of little chest freezers, I mean, get some commercial freezers and put them in a place that they go on.
Let's hope John's gonna come up with a big, great.
Well, John's, John's very familiar with this, uh, that type of operation, because he volunteers over at St. George when they do the turkeys and holiday drives. I run it for, uh, for the Mexico, this turkey drive every year, and we actually get a freezer trailer that comes in, um, because we need the capacity. But I'm thinking possibly if we could store the free, four free chest freezers that we have in the barn at St. George gratis, um, it might, it might help them as well and and solve, solve this issue as well. So I'm sending an email.
Something.
Public, private partnership.
But I, I think the, the big picture is there's a lot of moving parts, and here's the thing, it's happening quick. And um-
Yeah, well, that's, that was my worry, is that we were gonna do something quick, that in my mind, I wasn't convinced that it didn't make sense or whatever. You know, we did it quick and we got something done, the long term didn't make any sense, so that's why being quick has got some value and necessity, but not always the best.
But I, I think, so I think the plan we put together though is, it's a solid plan.
I think cleaning and painting just makes sense, you know, like Janice said, it, it could be years before the, the next planning, you know, the capital process and all of that. So getting it up to speed makes a lot of sense. The ramp, I think, ought to get some consideration, and uh, I don't know, we need-
Yeah, let's, yeah, is there a motion to approve moving forward with painting, carpet cleaning?
I'll move painting, cleaning, and take a hard look at the, the rim and the oil burn. Seems to me that's-
The I T?
That's a brainer, but okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna-
And the I T?
Okay, no, I'm, I'm just a-
Don't have it, okay, that's coming back, that'll come back within two weeks.
Tony, you're ready to talk about-
No, I could, I, I, I apologize, you don't have any information in front of you. My cost is not even close, it's under seventy-five hundred bits and pieces. The main thing is the wiring, for them to be connected to us.
Can that be, can that be done at the same time the electrical work?
I'm gonna have it done before Todd is even, it even done. I have my guy that is gonna give me a date when he comes in to, to do it, uh, local.
So why, why are we, uh, what's the reason on the wiring? Is current infrastructure not, uh, up to speed for data communication?
They don't have anything, you know, the cables are thirty years old. So it's only gonna be Janice and her crew, three, John, wireless access point, and then whatever I need for um, a server if we put it there. Uh, there's a lot of ideas in my head right now, we, we already have Comcast in there, I already got that installed. That may go away, because I'm looking into two wireless bridges that will connect our building, and that will be five hundred and fifty dollars one-time cost, and then nothing monthly, and I could get rid of Comcast, or leave it as a backup, I don't know. We started with fiber, as Matt knows, and that was, that was up there.
So you're talking maybe seventy-five hundred dollars?
It'll be, for the wiring, it'll be under seventy-five hundred dollars.
I'll include that in my motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're gonna not connect it.
Second on that?
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Todd, thank you for your work on this, we look forward to seeing it. More in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I'll be back here in two weeks with the electrical information. Thank you very much.
Some further numbers on those. All right, item eight, Barman Planner Kevin McGee, eight dot one, consider to take possible action on changes to the East River Preserve Deer Management Program. Allow for deer management efforts following the archery season, as dictated by the State of Connecticut.
So after this year's um deer management program season, uh, we had another meeting with the conservation commission and several hunters that participated in the program there. Um, hunters is indicated there, um, I just clarify and give out a little roundup is that we're not, not getting, not getting what we need um to protect the property in terms of deer browse, there's still a lot of deer browse on the property there. Um, last year, there's four deer taken from the property, um, and for the past about one, two, three, four, five seasons, um, we've been averaging about probably three to four deer coming off the property. Um, before that, we're about six or above, um, partly, um, some of it was due to activity probably from ever source a couple of years ago, we're doing the wiring through the uh, the preserve, uh, but the participants kinda did an interesting study there, kinda calculated out the uh actual number of days that they could be on the property, um, being twenty-two days, which are Monday to Friday days during that four or five week period from October fifteenth to November fifteenth. And then if you break that down in half, uh, since you're only out there until eleven in the morning, um, you're basically eleven days really, cause it's only half days at that point in time, so the, the interaction time out there is really low if um, we're serious about trying to improve the environment, uh, reduce the deer browse uh on the property there. Um, the current schedule also is missing prime times when the deer are moving through the property. Um, the rut uh with the weather and stuff like that, warmer weather, it's happening around the time we're shutting down in November fifteenth. So extending the season um beyond that period would hopefully increase uh members, and also they're indicated a lot of times with the morning hunt, a lot of times, guys are moving in there, um, the deer are actually waking up and kinda moving off property. Some, and a little movement during the day, and they, like, they see uh cameras, so the deer are moving back in the property later in the afternoon, good afternoon is on. Uh, so that's part of the recommendation is increasing the number of days, kinda match the state's hunting calendar uh for the district we're in, the state, and increasing the hours to, to all day. Um, the recommendation wasn't specific about uh weekends or not, I mean, my recommendation since I have my staff, the staff's not on the weekends, would be um, just this, keep this scheduled Monday to Friday, and maintaining no hunting, um, the holiday situation that we had before, and uh I'm assuming days that school's not in session, and then uh, not weekends. So that's the uh, the recommendation we're, um, the conservation commission is uh making to the board's document.
Your motion?
So.
Second.
Second.
Comments or questions?
So taking into account the days that the school isn't in session, all those other allowances, how many days from eleven to whatever will it be?
The.
And, and they'll be, they'll, they'll all be full days then?
Yes, you go from the season which begins September fifteenth to December twenty-third, um, they calculated sixty-five days. Uh, I believe these are the Monday to Friday days, uh, and then if you added the additional period in December, uh, you would get another uh nineteen days, on top of that, we maintained also, since this district, um, the state allows for the general hunts, since this area is so heavily populated with deer, uh, there's only two districts in the state, um, the one we're in, and I think Fairfield County is also the other one, which has an extended season uh due to an increased deer population.
I'm not against it, but um, that, is that, people using it for other than hunting can't use it? Or they're just aware of the fact that hunting is going?
There's no shutdown of the property for any other uses, um, it's just awareness of that they're out there, we have signage that goes up um before season begins, continues through the season, notify the public, um, that the hunting is in process, there's been no uh conflicts uh recent times between hunters and uh, and uh users, uh, there's one person originally on which was causing conflicts. Person in the public decides that, um, that's been clarified, um, but there's been really positive interaction, the LA guide interaction is dogs off leash, uh, which are kind of hooking the deer, running freely by some of these stands and stuff like that, um, makes it uncomfortable.
Don't talk about that supposed to be off.
Correct, and there's, I mean, that's a whole nother topic of.
Clearly marked on the entrances and parking.
Yeah, we have like major signs around there, uh, that's an enforcement issue, which uh conservation commission keeps on going back and forth with the police commission regarding, um, but there's only one animal patrol person which kinda decides taking care of things at the center, and then patrolling all the town parks, there's limited amount of time that person's on the property to do enforcement there.
There's a, there's a note on our attachment that says submitted by hunters, did you have, have I don't argue we do it actually, but has there been input from non-hunters on this?
Nobody, we haven't had any, um, it was part of the agenda for the conservation commission back on their March meeting.
So nowhere, not even our town, uh, website or anything has publicly notified that potential changes?
No, we just, so you said we just do standard agenda items as required by FOIA.
I'm not saying any requirements. I, I don't, it, it doesn't really affect me uh too much, but I have had some feedback about concerns, especially in the reserve, uh. Are you? I, you know, I, I particularly noted it because it said submitted by hunters, and I can appreciate, you know, their concerns.
Yeah, I mean, they said that was submitted to them.
Working out, but I, you know, the public also exists.
Right, and it's submitted to them, the commission looked at it, the commission has Scott Williams, uh, who is a wildlife biologist, working with the uh ag station, and a big part of the deer program since the beginning, and.
Part of the impetus to this is the lack of harvests.
Yes.
Uh, the harvest resulting to increased deer browse, chewing down the vegetation, which, which interrupts the natural environment of the property.
No, and I, I understand that, but. I'm not the other, the re, the water for it and that, you know, we have the same thing, and we've been noticing there that the the harvest is, is way down also, and a lot of it's just less interest in hunters. Uh, I'm wondering if that could be playing a part in our, our lack of harvests.
We've, when we first started the program, we had a lottery, the first two years we were picking up, it's out. Uh, the past couple of years, we've been averaging about fourteen hunters, which is actually a good number for the size piece of property we have that's out there. And we've been getting about, probably on average, three to four hunters on the property, uh, but they, depending on, depending on.
We have enough interest in hunting on it.
Yeah, we still have the interest in hunting, I have my staff which patrols the park and wants to make sure and kind of, um, keeping track of who's out there and stuff, uh, which, which entrances they're going in and out of, so we're, um, there's been some days where there isn't, but those are really rainy days, high wind days where you really don't wanna be in the woods. Uh, and then there's a little bit less interest during the winter when it's colder and snowier, and the January days, they, they could give up on, um, cause it is not the ideal place to be out there.
Kevin, I have a question, um, how do, how do hunters enter the property, where from, would they be crossing any private property to?
All, all access is from our trail entrances. We have accesses from, from which all four sides of property.
And.
And we do a hunter, um, for new interested people watching this, um, we select hunters through a lottery which, um, is sending out the, the notifications uh following this meeting, that's why I make sure I get the dates right for the application process there, uh, things extended or not, um, we sent out, there's up to twenty selected with five alternates, um, placed on the list just in case a couple don't meet the requirements. Uh, the hunters have to go through proficiency testing where they have to, from a raised platform, have to hit a target about sixty feet away, ten, ten inch diameter circle. Um, they have to have four out of five arrows into that target, and also as part of it, there is a safety meeting where we go over the history of the program and over, and the safety program issues with the property or requirements for the property, uh, regarding hunters have to be in the stands, the times they put their stands out there, um, all that type of thing is discussed with the hunters, uh, so it's just not like they get a permit to go on the property and go out freely, they, there's some requirements that we have.
So this is bow hunting only?
Bow hunting only also, correct.
And, and it's just a, um, I know the sort of the ground rules, if you will, but I, I sort of assumed that everybody's responsible to pick up every arrow that they send out.
Correct, yep.
Right, and, and is that, is that the protocol, I mean, are people seduced about that, because these things would be sort of dangerous?
Right, they're required to collect arrows, if they hit a deer and it wanders off, they're required to follow that deer and um, um, capture that arrow.
Hunters, I think, strike me as very diligent bow people, and, 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 and that's been your experience, everybody knows, newcomers understand the rules?
Right, yep, yep, and they said they're from a tree stand, so the shooting, and that's probably the reason why they're stand, you force them to shoot at angle into the ground versus straight out where an arrow can travel further distance.
Um, Charles, to your, one of your questions, um, yeah, but on the answer, I have yet to answer an email to the local reporter from the Gilbert Courier-Heron. I was always looking for stories, so.
That'd be good, to get the word out, exactly.
And then we'll do it on our social media as well.
Yeah, I just think it'd be worth it just, you know, make sure that we have the inputs that we need.
Yeah, all right, we have a motion up table in a second, uh, to approve the, changing the the, the deer hunting ministry plan, or the state of Connecticut, uh, archery season, any further?
I just wanna clarify that for weekdays only, so it's in the record, so if somebody looks at that, they can look at the manual and say, oh, it's weekends and stuff like that.
So which of these three, you have, what, what we currently have, which is twenty-two days, and you have option A, which is forty-six, and option B, which one are we acting on?
Um, B, B is the state season from September fifteenth to December twenty-third.
That's what you recommend.
Um, this year, since we're, by the time we get the application and stuff through, I think, I probably most likely start the program October first. Um, except the proficiency testing, the safety done, and those were currently scheduled for September, next year I have to ship the program back a month at least.
To get the training.
To get the training ahead of the September date, I think this year, um, October first, and then continue to schedule.
So.
January, we change that way this.
It's.
Changing it too.
If, uh, we can, um, include January in there, I think last year you actually allowed me to make January all day for the two weeks there, but if you wanna make it the full period as the state season, we can also go with that.
I think we're consistency, shake that.
Just stay with the state manual there.
But it's a fallback.
You can always blame the state, um, all right, let me try your minds all in favor.
All right.
That was carries, Kevin, thank you very much.
And I said, I'll get a preference, we always kinda get it out there, let people know where, in the woods and stuff there.
Jason, you have to help.
Yep.
Maybe just before we use the uh.
Okay, we're playing on the.
Yeah, that's a good idea, right, we're open, so get some signage out.
My, they said we get the signage, I have signage already.
What sign, what the sign is for?
Created and stuff there, so signage usually goes up, um, several weeks before the hunt begins.
Excellent, thank you. All right, item nine, Director of Human Resources, Mitch Goldblatt, uh, good morning Mitch.
Morning.
Item one, consider take possible action on the tuition discount agreement with Quinnipiac University.
Yes, we, uh, have been approached by Quinnipiac to put together a partnership with them, it's very similar to what we've done with several other universities, many of them local, including University of New Haven, Post University, Albertus Magnus, uh, they will offer our employees and families a ten percent discount um, on, on tuition, and in exchange for that, uh, basically, we would invite them to our uh benefit fairs, which we actually already did last month, in anticipation of a good relationship, and uh, put out announcements for job postings to their uh websites as well, and, and work with them on anything else that we feel would be uh, uh beneficial to both sides, so just need an approval from this board for, for sign, for, to allow Matt to sign such a partnership, I bring, sir, motion?
I'll make a motion. Second. Oh, second, thank you. Uh, any further comments?
Go Bobcats.
Yeah, go Bobcats.
Go Bobcats.
Is it gonna be a cocky fanatic?
And alumni.
And all. Let me try your minds all again.
Hi.
That was carries, item two, consider take possible action to allow an employer match of up to eight percent to the Lincoln Financial four oh one A defined contribution plan for employees who did not originally commit the full eight percent contribution upon hiring, Mitch.
I'm afraid this one won't be as, as quick, um, let me see if I can explain it as clearly as possible, the current situation and what my proposal to you today is, uh, and I will, we'll tell you, everything we're about to speak about, uh, has been discussed already with the pension committee. Um, endorses this idea that, um, I'm about to go through with you, if you recall, several years ago, back about ten years ago or so, we, uh, first opened up a four oh one A plan for those, uh, individual full-time employees who are not on the uh pension plan, this would be their retirement plan, defined contribution plan four oh one A, it was set up in such a way that we would allow someone to, uh, uh, direct deposit from their paycheck, three percent to eight percent of their, of their uh earnings into the defined contribution plan, the town would then match up to that three percent, eight percent, a hundred percent match from three percent to eight percent. What was discovered and not understood at the very outset of this, we found out after that, was the way we accept this plan makes that uh contribution by the employee an irrevocable choice, in other words, when they start employment with Lieutenant Guilford, whether at age twenty or at age seventy, they, they put in, the decision they make on day one of their employment can never be changed. Whether it's three percent, we made a whole number, so three, four, five, six, seven, eight percent could never be changed. That put pressure on every new employee to decide whether to put in the full eight percent, as most do, and I'll explain that in a second. And some feel that felt and still feel that, you know, at the time, they weren't prepared based on their current conditions, or they looked at the future and said, I might not always be able to put in that full amount, I've encouraged every employees come in to do the full eight percent because they leave money on the table for their retirement otherwise, so, um, that's the way it's been for about ten years. When we made the move from Mission Square to Lincoln Financial, we thought we might have an opportunity to change that aspect of our plan. It turns out that we were not, uh, able to change that because we were not starting a brand-new four oh one A plan. We were transferring one plan from one record keeper, that being Mission Square, to the new record keeper being Lincoln Financial. However, through this process, what we've come up with is kind of a workaround, if you will, that I like to apply to current employees and also future employees, we currently have about a hundred and twenty-five people in the four oh one A plan. When I budget, I budget for everyone except those we already know are not at eight percent, but when I budget anticipating what's going on in the future, I, I budget for eight percent, thinking that everyone walking into this is gonna put in the eight percent, uh, of the hundred and twenty-five people, um, six of them are at three percent, none are at four, three of them at five percent, one is at six percent. None are at four, three of them at five percent, one is at six percent, one's at seven percent. That's eleven out of a hundred and twenty-five. Everyone else put in the eight percent. So here's our workaround, is that we allow people, those people who are currently those eleven people, if they so choose, and also any new employees to still put in a minimum of three percent into the four oh one A. However, if they decide moving forward that they like to put in up to eight percent, the way we can do that is allow them to open a four fifty-seven account, which will also be with Lincoln Financial. Put the additional amount into the four fifty-seven account, then the town would then match that difference back in the four oh one. We can't match the four fifty-seven, we can put the money into their four oh one. Unfortunately, we can't go backwards. So someone is eight percent and all of a sudden says, I've got a family emergency or something, wants to drop down to three percent and do this, is not allowed to. It's still an irrevocable number. What I'm trying to do is take those eleven people, give them the opportunity at any time in their employment to make such a change. And then as new people come in, it gets a little bit more complicated, but explain to them, you can still put an eight percent up to, in the four oh one and just call it a day and, and, and leave it alone, and like everyone else, like, not everyone, most people, and just say, look, this is great, and get eight percent, eight percent match and move forward. But if they're a little hes- if they're hesitant for whatever reason, they can still put in anywhere from three to eight. And then at a future time, or at the same time, if they'd like to do the difference up to eight percent in the four fifty-seven, we as the employer would match them. I think this will do a couple of things for us. Number one, still make us very competitive with, with our four oh one plan, number one. And number two, um, also uh, make it a little more feasible on the employees who have felt somewhat, somewhat stressed and new employees coming in. Um, so I'll stop there. Ask if you have any questions. Barry Jane's here, I know she and I have done over this many times. Uh, Matt, I know is familiar with this because he's attended the pension committee meetings where I've discussed this concept. Um, I'll stop there.
Mitch, thank you very much for your summary and also for doing the work on this. Uh, I found that provision to be very, very inflexible. When someone makes a decision, when they first walk in, relative to what their, what their match or their contribution. And life, life changes things. Sometimes there are circumstances that dictate that you have more discretionary funds. Sometimes you have less. So I've, I've long had a problem with this ironclad, you make a decision, you know. Uh, let's, let's take a, a twenty-one-year-old college graduate comes in, who's, you know, paying down college loans, so maybe, maybe, maybe three percent is about as far as they want to go, but five years down the road, or ten years down the road, college loans paid off, alright now, it's time to start thinking about long-term savings and not be able to take advantage of uh, contributing more and get the matching piece, so. Still not happy that, we haven't been able to undo that provision in its entirety, but this is a, this is a way to start to get a, a little bit, a little better.
And I think the reason, if I'm wrong, the, the reason we are stuck, so to speak, in that provision is because we mandate the first three percent. If we did not mandate everyone do three percent, if it could be zero to eight, we would be allowed the flexibility. But there's something in the IRS rules, something in the IRS rules that makes this scenario happen.
The reason we mandated it, just I was aware, at, up until the point, this goes back to two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. At that point, every new full-time employee was mandated to put in whatever their contract called for. It was between three percent and eight percent, depending on the contract, into the pension plan. So our philosophy was, we still wanted to have people making a contribution to their retirement. And we opened it up and then say, well, the police will put in eight and the GEA will put in three. We opened it up to everyone to put in a minimum of three, a maximum of eight. So we ensure that every full-time employee has a retirement plan when they retire. There are towns that do the zero to whatever, and then somebody says, oh, I can't deal with that today. Then they retire twenty years later and have nothing. And we don't want that to happen to our employees. We want to make sure our employees have robust retirement plans. And that is why we made sure they put in at least three, but they can sort of do a lot better at eight, especially with the compounding and the investments along the way, so.
And this, and this IRS rule, uh, which if you, if you mandate, then you are required to do it in this fashion. It sort of, it sort of flies in the face of us, uh, implementing what could be, could be considered a paternalistic. Position. We want to make sure our employees have some kind of retirement, and they used to have to contribute. So I understand the logic on it, and just it's the inflexibility.
About that for all my time as, as well, which is why.
We complained, we, we had, we had discussions about this when we had other pension issues come up. And we were all horrified that someone had decided at three and then couldn't move up. The opposite still can't, is still not going to be able to be done, but, so to me, I think this is at least a step in the right direction.
So what would happen if someone in a union, if, if we got rid of the, the mandate and let them do whatever they wanted, and somebody's in a union, that requires they make a contribution, but they decide not to. What, what happens to that?
We don't have, we haven't run across that. I guess it's, it's in their contract, it's in everyone's, everyone's contracts. As a full-time employee, whether it's a personal contract or a union contract, that states that their contribution will be X during the pension plan. Or is this range if you're not, and of course, as people leave or retire who are on the pension, those people will all be replaced by people by, who are not on a pension plan, who are on the defined contribution plan. And it's a great plan. I mean, we, we are looked at as being one of the best, better ones around. We're trying to do other things with some of our unions to improve that even further. That's another story, but, um, I, I have to feel for some of the people who made a decision. And listen, of the eleven people I named, I don't, I, I'm pretty sure all eleven are not going to jump on this. Some people are very comfortable with their three percent and don't want a four or five, and don't want to put more in. They feel they still can't. But there are others that feel, wow, I've been here a few years now, my salary's gone up, my personal situation's a bit better. And I really wish I, I'm missing out on that match from the talent. This gives them the opportunity to do so. And then, like I say, any new employees will have much more flexibility. No, it won't be zero to eight, but it'll be three to eight. And that's, that's a good range.
Is there going to be, um, a specific time periods that they can make this change? I, I'm thinking logistics.
It's going to fall on my end. In your end, yeah.
Right, I know, I'm just, you know.
No, we, we allow people.
People come in, I, this month I want four, next month I want five, yeah, you know. It, it's, because it's going to be, I don't want, not totally manual, but it is going to be something that we really have to look at when we're doing payroll. We have to know, this person's got three over here, and oh yeah, now they got another two over here, we have to match it. I already have eight, if I put money over here, I'm not a match. I'm just, I, I'm, I'm just hoping to alleviate how often.
I'm bringing it forward to, I'm bringing it forward to be as flexible for our employees as possible. If you want to make it, they can only make that decision once a month, or once every six months.
Right, because we're, we're talking eleven people now, but now.
Yeah, there will be more.
My perception would be that as people come in, why not just do the three there and do the, the five some, just in case I have an issue. I'm just thinking it could, it could snowball, or maybe not. Maybe not, and I'm just thinking about the, the responsibility on, on our end to make sure that we're managing that.
I think allowing them to do it on a monthly basis, I, I think annually make the decision more than enough.
Uh, circumstances change more often than on an annual basis, quarterly.
Well, I know, but we're going from zero possibility to change to annually, I mean, that's a big.
Or once or twice during a fiscal year or calendar year. You, you know what I mean? I mean, we have people that. We have people that come in and change their defined benefit like regularly, but it's a standard amount.
Their, their four fifty-seven plan, they do.
Correct, but it's a regular amount. They say, I, I, it's a hundred, now it's fifty. It's not, I, I'm just worried that they're about that extra little match and making sure that we're good. I'm not saying we're going to be a problem, I'm, I'm being pessimistic here at, at the moment.
Uh, but, but as of today, those people in a four fifty-seven, we've got a lot of people in a four fifty-seven plans as well, in addition to their four oh one, or in addition to their retirement plan, can come in each week, and some do.
Correct, but I don't have to worry about whether I'm matching and how much.
Do we have to get approval from the unions on this? Because it, uh, does it, is it, is that stipulation codified, codified in the union contract?
It, it is, I don't think that, we can do, it, there shouldn't be any pushback on that, it'd be, it'd be MOUs. First of all, I can tell you, just, just, undoubtedly, uh, but, but I do know, every police and firefighter, every police officer and firefighter is doing eight percent. This is mostly falling on our GEA employees. In fact, maybe, maybe, they all be GEA or confidential, um, supervisors fall into this issue. But I can work with them on that. I don't think there'd be any pushback on that at all.
It's an added benefit, we're not taking anything away. I wouldn't think that they would have any disagreement with it.
Rather than us set the, how often you can do it, uh, I'd leave it to discretion of Mitch and Barry Jane to develop the, the workable schedule on how often folks can make that change.
Can we, can we, in motion?
Second, any further comments, questions? Having none? Let me try your minds all in favor.
Thank you.
What point I want to make, the four fifty-seven is a little more restrictive in terms of what you can do with your money, uh, once it's in there, right?
Right, it is, and you know, and the, the, the good news, uh, and it, believe me, we're going through this transition right now with Lincoln Financial. And there's been some hiccups, we're getting through them, um, but the good news is with both the four oh one and four fifty-seven being with Lincoln Financial as our record keeper, the employee will be able to be with one person, will be able to work with them on balancing, to your point, Matt, what they have in their four fifty-seven and what they have in their four oh ones, uh, going forward. That's going to be very helpful, I feel, to, to our employees, having one person to be able to keep both accounts at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten, Economic Development Coordinator, John Turudas, John, come on up. He's on the line, I suspect, for the same reason.
Hi, Dave. So, uh, before I hit on Fan Fest, I did send an email, well, regarding freezers, and, um, don't have a solution for you, you don't have space, so.
Creative thinking.
So, uh, Fan Fest, Fan Fest wants to return to Guilford, uh, the weekend of October sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Uh, they have figured out a way with the, the expenses of the event, uh, they would like to hold it on the Guilford Green under a tent. Uh, and that being the focal point for their event. They are looking to bring a little over six hundred individuals from around the world to, uh, to Guilford. Uh, for this second, uh, event in, in Guilford. So, uh, we had reserved Guilford Green, uh, for that event on those dates. Uh, so I know you all wanted an update as to where they stood, and, uh, what would be the impact on parking specifically, I know that came up before. Uh, we have reserved, uh, parking spaces at St. George's for that weekend. Uh, to the tune of two hundred spaces, uh, combine that with off-hour use of uh, town properties, uh, and you're looking at, uh, on the order of three hundred, uh, parking spaces. Many of their attendees come from out of state, and as I said, around the world, uh, New Zealand, Australia, uh, Europe, uh, as well, so a lot of these attendees do not have vehicles. Uh, they, uh, fly in, Uber in, so forth, so, uh, that's the update I have for you this morning.
So theoretically, there's space for at least half of the six hundred people to park cars, is that what you said?
Correct.
And then, um, with the hand, I'm just thinking of the hand, I'm trying to think of, that's probably the largest thing we have on the green, right? The three-day thing of the hand craft, and we must have six hundred people there, between the participants who have to park their car. The people, the Guilford Art League people, who, there are a lot of, those people that are outside the handcraft, but are there, and then the attendees there. Um, they do, though, run shuttle buses from the two, uh, state parking lots, I think, but in the times that I've lived here, I hardly ever see any cars parked in the, um, things, if it's eight. You know, I see the buses going back and forth, but I don't really see many, many cars parked there. So, um, I, I, I don't think it could be any worse, or any, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against this, I'm just trying to, I think it will be okay, and it's not the height of the summer. You know, where we, we, I don't know, I, I think it'll be okay, I, I, you know, it'd all kill me next weekend in October.
I, I personally don't think the impact is going to be any more than the handcraft. Probably will be less.
Yeah, but if anything.
Yeah, if I may say something, they carpool a lot.
What's that, Dave?
They arrange for carpools coming from where they're staying, so not everybody drives a car, it's a little different. They hang out where, at Airbnbs and local hotels, and then one person drives.
My logic was, you know, if anything, we were thinking the handcraft ought to make the move, not the other direction, another, bring another one. I, I, I guess, you know, can we make it work? Of course you could make it work, but it's, I, I would have.
Well, let's put it this way, if we do it, and, and it's a big parking mess.
That we don't do it.
We don't do it again, you know, it's harder to move the hand.
Hard to go back.
Handcraft is harder to go back, I think.
If it doesn't work, you know, come back.
Right, but I mean.
If it doesn't work, the, you know, the fairgrounds could be, could be, you know, pretty used. Um, you know, you're bringing six hundred attendees to town, uh, the lodging that occurs, the restaurant, you just occurs. They're going to be contributing into the community center, PMS, uh, going to be hosting some of that.
I think it was a good ve- event, I understand the logic of encouraging it. I just wish that they didn't put a green, uh, I'm just, why they do.
I feel that way about it more strongly, I don't think it should be a green. This is a private group. I, I understand that you and others have, have taken over the application process recommendation to them, and to make it not be an, an application from a private group. But substance of it is that it is a private for-profit group, putting this on, disrupting our town for an entire weekend at the most beautiful time of the year. Um, I, I'm not a favorite of that. I think it belongs on there. That's great, it's great for the town to have all these people here, but I don't think it belongs on there, so.
So the Park and Rec is partnering with it, which, as you said, gets over the hurdle of the fact that they're.
Yes, they're sponsoring, they are sponsoring.
Most of the funds that go into whatever it's.
I understand the point, and, 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 and there is a lot of pressure on the green, so that is a significant factor. My sense of this is, if it was at the fairground, people would, to a large extent, just speculate it too a little bit, but my guess is people would come up to the green anyway. They'd go to the fairground, encircle through the green. The, the, the vehicle traffic is equal, if not greater, as a result of people sort of making that rotation. So I, I don't know that it's, it's guessing. I don't know that it solves it by being on the fairground. I am sort of moved by the economic impact. Do we get as much still over from the day events? Maybe, maybe not. But if all of a sudden there was four more of these, then, then I, then, then I know it's a real concern. I hate slippery slope arguments, but that kind of, I don't know, maybe this is the first step. But I kind of thought this was a fun thing that did sort of generally benefit everybody.
And they, just like the handcraft, they, they would put, I assume, porta potties on the green. Because there, there's a whole situation of lack of bathrooms, and then, um, is there going to be alcohol once, are they going to come back for, um, alcohol permission to serve alcohol on the green?
No.
Yeah, I wouldn't think so, right? Because all the restaurants are right around.
Right there.
And some of the events are at the places, like bookstore and other places, so.
I mean, there's mixed reviews among the merchants, uh, it benefits some businesses, it doesn't. I mean, there's mixed reviews among the merchants, uh, it benefits some businesses. It doesn't, you know, it's not gonna benefit our partners or.
That's kind of what has always been said about the handcraft, where some of the merchants thought it was great, some of the merchants were like.
You're clocking up. Wha- wha- what is the, what is the use of the green that these people are precisely asking for?
Uh, it basically, uh, under a tent, a stage, uh, presentations, uh, readings, uh, workshops. Uh, actors from the, uh, the TV series, uh, yeah.
And they also do a merchandise area near as well. Uh, they got that, one of the tents. Last year, not tents, one of the, uh, in the big building, the barn.
Would be similar to handcraft, so the green would be, it'd be segregated area.
Yes.
Yeah. Provide your own security.
And, you know, I, I will say when the library has book sale on the first, um, Friday. A thousand people come to that book sale and park somewhere. Um, and we all, live, the thing opens at nine and people are online at seven. And it goes until six on Friday and it, the whole, Tyre Green and State Street. And everywhere else that you can think of is parked up and, you know, all the businesses are open. I don't know. I, I'm not trying to convince you, but.
Going on for days.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So also mentioned is that the tent is sided, so it's not, you know, totally open. Uh, they do that to control, you know, public or attendee access to the events, so. It's your, your decision.
My position is, uh, I wish we could find a way to make the connection between the access side. Fairgrounds and the, the green, a better connection point for, for long-term better use of both facilities. Uh, if, if anything, I, uh, I always thought we were trying to, to find a way to make the handcrafts. Uh, more willing to use the fairground, but, uh. I was surprised at the reaction of, uh, the previous event. Uh, and it was very positive. I mean, I hear a lot of positive things about it. I'm willing to try this. Uh, to me, it's an expanding of. The handcraft experience. I mean, we're, we're throwing away another weekend in town. It's what we're doing. Uh, I'm willing to do it for a year, but I, my long-term town planning hat on. I, I would love to find a, a better access, better way to connect the fairgrounds and the greens. So that we could have these major events in a facility that they belong. Still, you know, have the town be able to, to have access to the green and the event have access to the green. That's a long-term plan. So I, I'm willing to go along with this and try it for a year. Uh, it's not a direction I would normally go, uh, because to Susan's point. We are shutting down downtown to the rest of the taxpayers for another weekend. That's the bottom line. I mean, the people that don't go to the event effectively are going to be excluded from downtown for three or four days.
What are the hours again of it, do you know?
It's the mentality. It doesn't even matter what the hours are. You don't come downtown during handcraft. You don't come downtown during this.
How many people have already planned weddings?
Well, St. St. George is, uh, is blocked off, right?
Yes.
So St. George actually said they're not gonna do anything. They're not gonna, they're not gonna have four thirty mess.
I do think we should have a full law application. We didn't have a full law application.
We'll get, we'll get, yeah, we'll get it from, you know. And as John mentioned, you might not have heard, uh, this is benefit, it is gonna benefit, uh, St. George. Uh, they're gonna make a contribution to St. George.
Plus they're using their parking.
Correct.
I don't have a specific, it, actually the schedule is not, uh, laid out yet.
And is it a four-day event or a three-day event?
Uh, I believe it's three days.
We'll have to look at the four.
Probably something we can.
Friday, Saturday, Friday, it's Friday, uh, so the tent will be up on Thursday. They'll probably be set up. They've gotta set up the stage. Uh, that kind of stuff probably.
I think they're looking to set up starting Wednesday, the tent. And then the rest of the, the stage, an AV comes in after that. Their kickoff, I think, is Thursday afternoon, evening, Friday and Saturday.
So how many of the green?
I don't believe it's Sunday. Again, I don't have the.
So it's Thursday, it's Thursday, Thursday and Friday, it's Saturday. Well, that does make a little bit of a difference.
If, if I may speak, they do have a gathering for early registrations on Thursday night. Um, Fri- the morning there's registration. Um, they have events typically in the morning. Then people are free during various times during the day. And they have evening sessions that let out about nine-ish, ten o'clock at night. And they have a full schedule on Saturday, including visits with the, the various actors, which may or may not be around at other places on the green. Like it was last time. And there is a Sunday morning to early afternoon activity.
Dee, Dee, did you, is that in print anywhere or is that just from?
That's, that's in, I follow the Fan Fest site, so that's where I get all that information from.
So if I have a couple of quick questions, sorry, Sandy. The Dee, uh, are there any, is there any opposition within the chamber? Are there people who don't think it's a good idea?
Um, it's not a chamber issue per se. Um, I think just it's a Guilford Green merchants element. And, um, for some people, it's just, um, really good. They were hoping that maybe some of the visits with the actors would be, um, at a different time. So the access to getting into stores would be different. Um, but, and for other people, um, they're not shopping, um, certain stores because of the price point. But I, again, that's true for any event. Um, that's why we have the diversity of businesses that we have.
Yep. And, and John, what number, how many grid squares are they actually occupying? Is there any access to, for instance, the east side of the, of the green toward Town Hall?
Definitely. They can't, they can't put tent, um, stakes on that side of the green anyway, so it's gonna be contained to the, to the west side of the green.
To the store side.
To the store side, to the Wiffield Street.
Yeah.
Okay, and, 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 and start in the, the north side, like how far north does it go? Does it go past the, uh, statue?
Good question.
That can be part of our approval too.
Yeah. Create a little bit of, um, um, relief to some of this concern that it's over.
Right, we do, that's a good point. And they're also limited by the, you know, the, the statues and, uh, the, the trees.
It would be really helpful to get a specific proposal of what you sort of envision would meet their needs. And would balance the needs of everybody else to be able to use portions of the green.
I, I just think it's, you know. When an event like that's going on, you just make a choice.
Um, so, so Dee, are you, you're still there, right? Dee, are you still there? So basically, it sounds like late Thursday, Friday, Saturday and something till early afternoon on Sunday. I was just asking about the sched, the time, the, the event schedule again, so it's late Thursday?
It's usually, um, from what I can gather, um, people who arrive early can do early registration and then have a certain status. Um, have, um, able to come in and get registered. And then the vast majority of people come in for Friday where they can get their tickets, et cetera. Um, and then there's, there's a schedule that goes on. It's an on schedule, off schedule. So there's time for people to go out and grab lunch, grab coffee. They're big into coffee. Um, and, um. It's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a three-day event that usually are done at about two o'clock on Sunday.
Thank you.
So it sounds like it, it's not full impact on Thursday.
No, there'll, there'll be people downtown prepping, I believe, is what happened last time.
And again, it's, it's.
But not attendees.
It's reviews from the merchants as well.
All right, let's continue to proceed with the development. Pull together an application. Any, so we know where the task is gonna look, uh, all that stuff.
Yeah.
You know, if, you know, if we do vote to do this, the police can give us some pretty good input, how it went for that parking wise or problem wise. You know, add to the fact.
Well, just the, the, the mere fact that there are two hundred spaces in St. George is.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, you, you can assume one, you know, one car for every two people, probably.
Yeah, that's right.
Cause people tra- people travel three or four to it.
Just cause it's six hundred people, there, there won't necessarily be six hundred cars.
Absolutely.
That's very good. Did you major in that?
No, I could, I always tell people.
Except for.
Yeah. Okay, contact.
So, um, with the organizer, our discussion will be that we can use the green or?
I, I think we've sort of arrived at that. We just need to.
We didn't take the vote yet, but.
Right, yeah. It's just, I think it's a sentiment.
We haven't ruled it out.
It's a, it's a sentiment on the board that it can go for.
And we will, uh, control where it's, where it's at. I'll get that proposal back here in the next meeting.
Can I say, John?
Sure.
Yeah, that's a great idea. And, and you can put forth the concerns that we have, even though I probably will vote for it. I think all the concerns that have been brought up should be discussed with that person.
I think it's important that they get the sense of the pressure on the green.
Yeah.
And our general concern, I think collectively, honestly.
Articulated by.
That, that everybody should have access and people shouldn't feel excluded. And that's just good if they internalize that and don't take it for granted, that this is just space that they, anybody can.
Right.
What were their, what were their downside to staying on the fairground, like?
Uh, capacity was one, because they had a larger attendance last year, so they, they felt a little constrained there and.
So they went to a smaller venue?
Yeah, no, the tent, the, the, no, the tent is bigger than the barn.
Yeah, no, the barn, so.
The other issue was the transportation issue going from the green to fa- back to the fairgrounds and vice versa.
So when they had their downtime, they came to the green, right, right? So the impact.
Particularly at night.
Yeah, yeah, this is not like a single fireworks. Everything happens down there, stays down there, then people leave. Or other events that go on, you know, at the fairground. This is, I can see the trip back and forth creating more, more transportation headaches.
Uh, yeah, you, you know.
People wanted, people, this group wants to be on the green.
None of these are convincing, mate. These are negative.
I mean, I'm sure the reason they want to be on the green is the green is perfect. It's like so solid. It's perfect for the event, but.
I said this last year.
We should change all our signs for the day.
But is that what we want? I mean, what we're doing is giving them. So it's three days. I mean, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, to make a profit.
We're not giving them, you know, a tent on the green. We're giving them our town.
Well, we're also giving our merchants a boost too.
Some of the merchants, yes. Some of the restaurants, you know.
Those are the restaurants.
Uh, I'm gonna tell you, Death Obana Cha had, uh, made a, made a killing last year.
Great, glad for her.
You know why? She went out, she went out ahead of time and got merchandise. Uh, so she, she was pretty shrewd, um.
Ella was, Ella was very positive on the event as well. I think the comment was it was one of the best things of the year.
And the food center was jamming, uh, down some, there were, there were some.
Probably they'll be.
All right, so we'll bring it back and I'll bring the organizer back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item eleven, um, geez, we got through eleven.
I have, I have the.
Yeah, we're, 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 yeah, but, but we should be.
I think we're gonna move along.
Yeah, uh, discussion to take possible action on a resolution to join the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority as a member municipality. Is there a motion to do so?
Uh, yes.
At a second.
Second.
And in, uh, out of concern for, uh, Sue's point, uh, would we entertain, uh, approving. Yet contingent upon Pete's review and approval of the, uh, the, the LOA or the BMO or whatever.
Can we approve joining it now and do that? And then maybe get, all take a look at this at some other meeting?
Yeah, that's fine. Good, thank you. All right, let me try your minds on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I think this is just, whether or not we ever benefit from this or not, I think it's worth the exercise.
I do too.
Well, we, and we, we addressed them. We, we all got one letter about it and then we had one person here. So I think we tried to address the concerns that were mentioned in that one letter and addressed by this one person, so.
All right, uh, item twelve, consider to take possible action on a noise control variance application from the Guilford Police Department for its national night out. I dare anybody to say no to this.
They want to use the green, so.
I do. It blocks the police, three hours, so we're all invited.
And this has been a smash.
And it's, it's, Kudos Scott Jengres is the guy that recognizes this and he is just absolutely, his enthusiasm for this kind of stuff is just overwhelming, so. Anyway, uh, I'm assuming that, uh.
We all, we all make the motion.
They all, they all seconded. Let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, item thirteen, appointments and resignations, uh, act on a recommendation to appoint Vicky, uh, I know where it's Vicky, Victoria. Uh, Gersten is an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty eight. I'd like to make that motion because, uh, I was introduced to Vicky through the newcomers club.
Oh, wow.
And, 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 and I had suggested that, you know, a great way to get to know people in town is to get engaged. Her, as you see, I think her CV is pretty impressive, uh, a lot of grassroots organizing in DC. She and her husband have been to town for a couple of years now. Um, so anyway, I'll make that motion in a second.
So.
You got it, sir. All right, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, thirteen dot two, act on a recommendation to appoint, uh, Fran Paranto as an alternate to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy for a term to expire. Uh, April thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Very much like to make that motion.
Is there a second? Second, good. Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thirteen dot three, act on, uh, recommendation to appoint Fran, Fran, uh, Paranto as an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. And fill a vacancy for a term to expire on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty seven. Is there a motion?
I'd, I'd like to make that as well. It, it, with just a quick comment, I mean, from time to time, we have people who are on more than one board. Um, depending on the boards and how time consuming it might be, it might kind of get some attention, but I think those are perfectly compatible, so.
Uh, it's good to have, uh, Fran back. Uh, he was, he was pretty active a number of years ago. Had some health issues. Now he's back in the game.
Really, it's great.
Back in the game. All right, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thirteen dot four, I recommend a recommendation to reappoint Catherine Adams to the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on June thirtieth, uh, twenty twenty nine. Is there a motion?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Thirteen dot five, act on a recommendation to reappoint Irini Estelarus Katro. To the Human Rights Commission for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty nine. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second, let me try your minds, all in favor? Aye, that motion carries. Uh, thirteen dot six, act on a recommendation to reappoint Terry Kane to the Water Pollution Control Authority for a term to expire on July thirty first, twenty twenty nine. Is there a motion?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
All right.
Uh, act on a recommendation to, uh, appoint, it shouldn't be reappoint, uh, Jeff, uh, Jeffrey Ambrosiak, who is on the line this morning. Jeff, good morning and thank you for your patience to the Board of Ethics for a term to expire on July thirty first, twenty twenty nine. Is there a motion?
Oh, but.
Somewhat.
Yes, I'll second.
Second, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, thirteen dot eight, uh, act on a, uh, on the appointment of Zachary Rodriguez to the Human Rights Commission to fill a vacancy. For a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Uh, is there a motion?
Somewhat.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, item fourteen, request reuse of town property, uh, act on a request, uh, from the Shellfish Commission to place a sign on the green advertising its clam jam. Um, twenty twenty five, taking place on July nineteenth, twenty twenty five, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
There we go. Clam jam coming to Guilford. Uh, let me, uh, try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
I don't think anybody's saying.
Your second, your second.
I second it.
Did we miss the chowder challenge, ironically? Sort of, they're, they're kind of overlapping in some way.
The clams, then you make the chowder.
Act on a request for the Shoreline Chamber of Commerce to use the green and to place a sign on the green advertising its chowder challenge for a cause and marketplace uh, taking place on September 28th, 2025. Is there a motion? So, yeah, let me try your mind, all in favor? Aye, that motion carries. 14 dot three, act on a request from the government police department to use the green and place a sign on the green advertising its national night out, taking place on October 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion?
No.
And a second? Uh, let me try your minds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that motion carries. Uh, 15, committee reports, I think we're pretty much up to date on affordable housing at this point. Um, just that one thing that we are, that the, the bid document will now be going out on the Affordable Housing Parcel Analysis, uh, so that, that will go out.
Great.
Just signed it this morning. All right, uh, correspondents, anything for anybody?
Old business? New business?
Let me say this about the new software. It's significantly easier. Thank you, whoever's listening.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna get my lesson after this.
Yeah.
My God, lesson, forget about it. Touch a button, turn it on.
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm gonna meet with Tracy.
All right. Uh, yeah, that's, that, that brings up a point. I haven't had an opportunity to talk to Tracy about it, so, uh, we won't do it until, until the right time.
Yeah.
Uh, all right, uh, public forum, anyone wishing to address the board in public forum? Bearing none, uh, are there any potential motion to adjourn?
Some.
Second.
Second, uh, non-debatable motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion carries. Thank you all.